This is the town of New Canaan Town Council Town Hall Meeting, the regular meeting and public hearing for Wednesday, October 16th, 2024, starting at 7:00 p.m.ish. And we will start with our agenda, item number one, which is our Pledge of Allegiance. So we will invite our esteemed guests to come on up and lead us in the pledge. So please do, come on forward. If everyone would please rise.
So hi, thank you guys for having us. My name is Tom Rowe. I'm a former Eagle Scout and Cub Master of PAC 45 in New Canaan. We're one of three PACs in town and we are affiliated with St. A's. And we have a great group of Cub Scouts here from, I think, all of our elementary schools, primarily West School, South School, and New Canaan Country School. So we have a great group, a great program. We do camping, Pinewood Derby, all sorts of fun stuff. But we're honored to be here with you guys tonight and see civics in action and all what the Town Council and everything does. So thank you guys so much for having us. Guys, remember, if we are in uniform, we salute. We're all going to look at the flag. And if we are not in uniform, what do we do? We put our hand over our right. So David, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, on its own, under God, in your physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys so much for having us.
Well, thank you for being here, guys. Thank you for coming. And it's awesome that you're serving your community and being involved in such a wonderful organization. We truly appreciate it. We actually, Luke, you're an Eagle Scout, correct?
Yeah, so great job, guys. It's not easy coming up here, getting dressed up, be in front of like a large audience like that. I know while at times it's exciting, but it's also, there's a lot that goes into this. So you're on your way to a very special journey. And I wish you the best. It's super exciting and a ton of fun.
We will lead you guys to a productive meeting between sides here.
You guys did great.
Thank you so much.
You guys did great.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we will do the roll call.
Rita Bettino. Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Jennifer Fons.
Here.
Luke Kaufman.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton. Hillary.
Here, I'm here.
Yes. Hillary Orman.
Here.
Christina Ross, here. Eric Tunam. Penny Young.
Here.
Jennifer Zonis.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, great. Now we'll now call the meeting to order. We had the pledge. Item Agenda, or Agenda Item Number Two, Minutes, Approval of the Minutes for the following meetings. Special Meeting, September 4, 2024. Regular Meeting, September 18, 2024. And Special Meeting, September 23, 2024. So can we get a motion to approve those minutes? Luke makes the motion.
I'll just open up for discussion. That's fine.
And now open for discussion, Tom.
I just want to comment on the September 4th. I'm fine with the other two. And I don't want to wear you guys out with this, but I just have a personal opinion that minutes should not attempt to characterize the testimony and at private meeting of individuals who may speak on at some length. I think they should be more matter of fact that John Smith stood up and spoke on the question of the St. Luke construction period. And so I'm just going to vote no on this because of format reasons.
Thank you, Tom, duly noted. And I actually do agree about in terms of, let's make sure we're not editorializing and opining in these minutes. With that said, any other comments on these minutes? And I guess we'll have to, we can.
I think that's an excellent comment by Tom. I think that's appropriate and we should all hold ourselves to that standard.
So then do we rewrite these minutes?
Well, I think as their position posted up, I think we're, that's what we're approving now. So there'll be no further amendments or edits. This is it.
Can I add?
Maria?
Yes.
I just want to say, I think it's great to have minutes like this because down the road, you don't really have the history of each minute of meetings taking place. And I really, you know, sometimes I go back and look at minutes of past meetings, they're so plain, there's, there's no detail. So I, I kind of feel like erring on the side of detail is, is better personally. That's my opinion.
Yes, Kim and then Jennifer.
Maria, I agree with you. I was comparing the minutes. We had three sets of minutes and while all minutes were impeccably done, the minutes that were, that we're discussing now kind of told a story. It gave me a much more deeper understanding of what actually happened at the meeting. So while I agree with what Tom's saying, that we have to make sure that they're as accurate as possible, and I know that takes a little bit more work, I do prefer to have minutes that are more detailed than just action.
Jennifer.
Two quick points. So first of all, just in terms of the record, to answer in response to Maria and Kim, is that it, it is recorded, so there is a recorded record of every sign. And this predates me, I was not part of the Town Council at the time, but just I've picked up at various points in the conversation that it seemed that there was an agreement in a prior year that we were going to have for, for, I don't know if it was legal reasons or what have you, but, but shorter and succinct and that, but that there would always be a record because it was recorded. So I'm just sharing, that's my impression of it.
Just to clarify, I agree with Christina that, that what the Town Council decided that night was, it was either ambiguous or clearly was only applicable to that night's, the one night's minutes. But when we were faced with the question, we did vote for, for simplicity. The second point I wanted to make is, you know, once you get it right, it, it does have some appeal as a, as a reference point. But the question is, what do you have to do to get it right? And in my opinion, well, the way I approach the role is that I want to be sure before I approve minutes that they're accurate. The only way I know how to do that with this style of minutes is to go and compare them against the entire video. So all 12 of us, i- in my view, would, would be responsible to do that before we voted to be sure they were accurate. And also that, that it was very clear whether we're quoting people or characterizing what they're saying, that, that wasn't clear, I think, in, in these minutes. So it's, it's not just a question of the end product, it's a question of, is the process, is the burden on Town Council members appropriate, given the fact that the, the video is available? So.
Okay, any other comments, Christina?
I, I just want to make something very clear. The minutes are not just single-handedly written by me. They go by Tucker, Mike, and Hillary. So the minutes are reviewed by four people before they are presented to the Town Council. And I think that's important to note, that the minutes are transcribed as per both the video and what was witnessed here at the meeting. If there's a mistake, then at the meetings, you can bring up an issue and correct the minutes. But I really think that to disparage the minutes as being inaccurate, when in fact they weren't, is really a dis- disservice to the entire council.
Maybe it would be. I didn't use the word inaccurate at all. I just, I just said I haven't, I didn't feel it was appropriate to spend two hours reviewing something, you know, to, to create this work product, which isn't, has limited utility, given the existence of the videotape.
You have two hands up online.
Let's go, Hillary, let's go with you.
Oh, Maria can go first. She had her hand up first. Go ahead, Maria. That's okay.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I totally understand, we do have the videos, but I think the summary version, the, of the minutes are helpful. I'm thinking down the road, you know, if, if something happens to servers or YouTube or, I just think it's a written version of the minutes can be helpful. It's a historical kind of record of what happened. If the videos go away, what do we have? We just have a bunch of outlines or agendas with maybe a little bit more elaboration or just votes. So I just think it's, I, I don't think it hurts. It's a lot of work. I, I really believe that. It's definitely a lot of work to make sure you, it's done accurately. But I like the redundancy of it, the backup plan for the record.
Okay, Hillary?
Um, I, I feel like we've treaded this so many times and I thought that there was an agreement that they were going to be more streamlined. And since my name was just invoked about editing them, I, I have to spend, I spend a lot of time editing and checking the video. And every time I've sent around edits, I've said that we should be more streamlined as per our vote. So I just wanted that to be clear because I do think that it's excessive. I think if the videos go somewhere, so go the minutes. Like, there's a fire or some meltdown, we're faced with the same possibility. And I don't think we should be going down this path where if people are taking the minutes seriously and really reviewing them, it's, it's hours, it could be hours of work rewatching the video and making sure everything's accurate. So, you know, I'm kind of with Tom on this. I feel like we've discussed this ad nauseam. And I thought we had come to a conclusion and yet every meeting, we're talking about it again. Sorry, I'm not feeling well.
No, it's fine. I'm sorry, Hillary, is there more?
Nope, that's all.
All right, we're, we're, I think we're done with this conversation. Let's just bring it forward for a vote. You're in, you're out. Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, say aye.
Okay, I need to make a roll call.
Okay, take the roll call.
I can approve two of them, but not the third. So I'd be a no vote if you're voting all three together.
Okay, you know what? Let's, let's, let's break it up a little bit. Let's do an amended motion. How about we take September 18 and September 23, we'll have an amended motion. So all in favor of approval of September 18 and 20, September 23 minutes? Yes or no? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, unanimous.
Unanimous for that? Okay, great. And now the second amended motion is a motion, amended motion to approve the special meeting minutes for September 4, 2024. All in favor?
Okay.
Call the roll.
Rita Bettino.
Not here.
Tom Butterworth.
No.
Jennifer Fons.
No.
Luke Kaufman.
Yes.
Mike Morrow.
Yes.
Maria Norton.
Yes.
Kimberly Norton.
Yes.
Hillary Orman.
No, thank you.
Christina Ross, yes. Eric Tunam. Penny Young.
No.
Jennifer Zonis.
No.
Five yeses and five no's.
So for a select person, you'll need to tie, we have a tie on the September Special Four meeting. That's okay. You are breaking a tie on the following. We have an amended motion to approve the special meeting minutes for September 4, 2024. We have five yeses and five no's.
Is this, I'm, I'm voting in the, with the group that voted for the most streamlined, least detailed minutes. I've been very clear from the time I was on the Board of Education to now, minutes are supposed to be a reflection of votes that were taken, not who said what, who said this, who said that. So is the vote to, I would be with the side that voted to have the most streamlined minutes with just a rec- a, a record of the votes that were taken with very little added commentary.
Understood. So I just want to be clear, the, the document I sent around today was posted to tablet. So that's the one where I edited out massive portions of the last minute. So everyone saw that, that's what we're voting on, right?
Yes.
I, I, you know, I, something told me you guys hadn't seen my edited version because, Tom, I heard what you said and I took out massive portions of what was in there.
I didn't see your.
It was supposed to be posted.
That is correct. Mike, the last thing I saw did say draft over and it was lots and lots of.
Right, and I've, okay, so why don't we do this? Because honestly, again, this is, we're gonna, we've approved the one amended motion.
When was it approved? When was it posted?
About 4:05.
So let's put it off for the next meeting so you guys can look at it. Because it was presented specifically in agreement with the first selection. And I've spoken with her repeatedly and I always appreciate her experience that I removed massive portions of it where it was just essentially a statement or two of what the speaker said, and then it continues on, and other comments were made. So you can go to the record to see what that person said rather than characterizing, you know, someone said something about the sewer capacity. You can go look at it. So it was, it was more, it's in alignment with what we're talking about. But with that said, since you haven't seen it, we're going to table that and move it along. But at least we have amended, the, the first amended on 18 and 23 are now approved, okay? We're moving along. Number three.
Thank you, Mike, for putting all the effort and time into doing that to accommodate like a lot of the requests. And I think we're all in the position that we want that type of end result and you put that forward, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
Mike, can we just be clear then about what the expectation is going forward? Because there will be minutes now from this meeting. Can, can we just set a clear expectation so we don't have this conversation over and over again? And make it the motion? I don't know.
To create the minutes in this format.
Well, we've, we've taken a vote in the past of what these minutes are supposed to look like. And I've conferred with the Town Attorney, I've spoken to, you know, prominent people in the town who've chaired prominent boards, canvassed their opinions on it. I think we're, believe it or not, probably saying a lot of the same thing here, but we, I think all are a little, are mindful, we shouldn't be characterizing public comment statements or delving too deep into everything before us. I mean, I'm an attorney. If you give me 100 pages to write on, I'll give you 100 pages. So the less, I think, is better here. And I think it is action items and not characterizing public comments, just say, this is what this person, they were speaking in favor of, this is, you know, a line about what they said and then the rest is they had other comments. And then you can go and refer to the, the video. So with my understanding, we were going to have essentially what I call bare bones with a little bit of flesh on it. So you at least could understand, you know, have a slight context of what was said, of that action item, but not a, you know, five to six to seven lines per public speaker or per agenda item that we were talking about. Because I agree, it goes off into, you know, the Netherlands and we're starting to argue about factual, you know, accuracies, inaccuracies, characterizations. It's too much, it's beyond, I think, what any other board does. I mean, I look at the Police Commission minutes, I look at Fire, I've looked at Board of Ed, I've looked at, I looked at Todd's on Board of Finance. I don't want a longcom or something, I just don't think it's necessary. And I don't, I don't even think there's a majority support for that. So the expectation is, and I've had this discussion with Tucker as well, is bare bones with a little bit of flesh on it. And I don't know how else to really say that. And now that I'm looking at it even closer, and if you could see what I did with the most recent minutes, it's really cut it down to the action item with a, a slight contextual, you know, phrase next to it. So you kind of get a little bit of a flavor of what this particular action item is, and that's it. Please.
You know, I just, the other comment I would make is, and you're an attorney, is that if it is not characterized exactly correctly, and so are you, Tom, if it's not characterized exactly correctly in the minutes, those become a legal document that anyone that has an issue with the town can use those, you know, and, and, and if they're not correct then, or if they're mischaracterized or they, or somebody had a different feeling about them, it could be used in, in a, against the town. So that's why you really should keep them as brief as you can. And people can always go to the video and debate the context or whatever. But it, when you're, when you're summarizing and you don't get, you either have to have the full video and the full transcript or the bare bones, otherwise you can put yourself in trouble. You get yourself in trouble, I think.
Have we ever thought about using AI? I mean, like, a lot of my meetings are recorded and there's transcripts and everything and it's not passing through like, like a lot of people. It's, it's presented as such and then we agree upon like, that it did it well or didn't it do it well? But rather than have a, a manual process of going through different bodies, does it make sense to have something?
Not sure we're there. We may get there, but I'm not sure it's there yet. I mean, it's getting there, but I'm not sure it's there.
I'm at the front line, we're there. So, so maybe we're not ready to introduce it here, but we're definitely there.
I'd like to request that if there are changes to documents that have been put into our packets on Friday night, and we are expected to be voting on them, you know, the, tonight, a lot of us have very busy lives and don't sit and read our tablets during the course of the day of our meeting. So I think it's unfair to us to have to make a decision on something that was put into our packets, you know, at the last night.
We'll get proper prior notice on any documents that have been updated and need to be reviewed and voted on prior to our meeting. So I agree with you, Penny. Okay? All right, Item Agenda or Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comments. We have Roy Abramowitz, please take the stand. Sorry, the podium. Oh, member, hold on, members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on Agenda Topic Scheduling Review and/or Vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address and comment. Minutes.
Thank you and good evening. Roy Abramowitz, have an office at 112 Main Street, Suite 6, New Canaan, Connecticut. My credentials speak for themselves. I want to make a comment since there's an Audit Committee, comment on that. I notified the Audit Committee by email on 9/24/24 of the following to add to their 9/26/24 meeting agenda. I received no response nor was my inquiry addressed. I want the Town Council to be aware. The required footnote disclosures pursuant to generally accepted accounting principles and generally accepted auditing standards in the town's audited financial statements are deficient and run contrary to the Connecticut guidelines pertaining to municipal ethics and transparency in respect to related party disclosures. GAAP accounting standards, codification 850 mandates, financial statement disclosure of all related affiliated party transactions, including the nature of the related party relationship, a description of the transactions, including those with no or nominal amounts, the dollar amounts of the transactions and their effects on the financial statements, amounts due to, due from related parties and the terms. Related party noncompliance can lead to fines up to $500,000, imprisonment up to 20 years in civil lawsuits. Upon discovery by elected and appointed officials of a previously undisclosed related party transaction, a previous audited financial statement should be restated and/or disclosing the transactions in the current financial statements. Noncompliance should have resulted in a qualified adverse or subject to orders opinion. In one example, the Town Department of Public Works, Board of Education, EMS, NC Police Department, and NC Fire Department participated in approximately $2,448,995 in related party transactions without competitive bidding with one high elected official with dominant influence for the period August 28, 2015 through July 2024. This includes $453,712 in transactions for the period January 17, '22 through August 4, 2023 without any ethical disclosure to the town clerk. The same related party votes on the town budgets, which include appropriation of taxpayer funds to these transactions. The same related party set on ordinance committees and appoints vets and votes on nominees to the town's oversight committees, Audit Committee and Board of Finance. A direct conflict of interest, self-dealing, lack of internal control, lack of segregation of duties, lack of checks and balances, lack of transparence, and lack of best practices in financial reporting. Additionally, the managed representation letter, which is signed by the town executive to the auditors, should have addressed these issues but did not. Let me just say one thing, the current administration has nothing to do with the representation letter, it would be the prior administration on a prior audit. But going forward, it's mandatory that related party transactions have to be addressed in the representation letter from the town and it have to be disclosed in the financial statements. Because without that, you have lack of transparency and the population doesn't know what's going on. If anybody wants to question my credentials, you could go to rafinancial.net and they're listed there. This is the forensic auditing I did to support the numbers that are used. Okay? Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Roy. Okay, next up, we have Louise Simpson. Please, come on up. Please state your name and your address.
My name's Louise Simpson. I live at 59 Millport Avenue. I'm going to be really brief. I'm just here to address the e-bike issue in town. I did a little research myself today and found out that there is, there are Connecticut laws in effect for e-bikes and foot scooters concerning riding on sidewalks, all of the things that you all already know that's going on in town. So I would hope that all of you would come up with an ordinance that we can all live with, the youth and the adults, that we could live cooperatively together, but hopefully to keep everybody safe. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. I'll, I'll just let you, I'll let you know and actually have a police commissioner here behind you.
Yeah, I know, I spoke to him already.
Good, all right. I was going to actually ask him to make a statement.
You're the people with the teeth.
So, yeah, so, well, yes. That's definitely an issue that is now becoming extremely important for us and prior, it's being prioritized. I actually had a discussion with Councilman Hillary Orman about it very recently. And there is, I think, action that we'd like to turn over to our Bylaws and Ordinance Committee and have a discussion about what we can do as an ord- as a town to start putting some teeth into enforcement on how to regulate the use of these bikes so they're operated in a safe manner. And if we can have it, everyone peacefully coexist. One of the things I had mentioned was perhaps having an ordinance regarding having to register the, every e-bike, like you have to have a dog license. So this way we can understand who the bike belongs to, we can track down the parents because I'm assuming it'll be registered their home, that'll assist law enforcement in having to issue any citations of, to any children, to parents who have children utilizing these registered bikes. But we have extremely capable and knowledgeable people on the Town Council, of course, with the Bylaws and Ordinance, and they've been doing a fantastic job. So this is something I really would love for them to, you know, really get a hold of and really push on because you and many, many, many residents are really complaining about it. So you're not alone by any stretch.
Oh, I know. And let me just say this, the police have been wonderful. They talk to these kids in a respectful manner. They are caring and really, really have gone out of their way to try to mentor these kids. And it's not usually met with a whole lot of respect.
Right.
Let me just say that.
Sure.
The kids have really been rude to them. And, you know, I, I have to say, the police have far more patience than I could ever have. But, but they, the police have really tried to mentor them and address this issue in a very warm and caring way, and you need to know that as well.
Right.
I think that's a really important fact. I mean, so I, I live in town and I sometimes, you know, I'm walking in town and it's becoming increasingly an issue, like a concern. I'm not saying it's a problem, I'm saying it's a concern, like, let's, let's put boundaries around this. But the, the Police Department has been absolutely overwhelmingly fantastic in the way they're dealing with this. And I think their approach is, is good and I think we need to put some boundaries around this. So I think it's, it's, it's perfect that you're highlighting that because I'm seeing it from, from my lens and I, we, we want everybody in the community to be safe, right? So that's.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and I think, I think the key is to maybe have the parents be a little more responsible. I think that's the key to this whole thing. I'm sorry to say that, but, you know, that commercial, it's 10:00 p.m., do you know where your children are? It's kind of like that right now. I think, I have a friend who works at the mobile on the weekends, so I often stop in there at night. And what goes on there sometimes is unbelievable. But I have to say, the police are fantastic. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, Agenda Item Number Four, Audit Committee Update, Robin Frye, 10 minutes.
Good evening.
Don't minute this opening remark, but on here, minutes for three minutes and audit committees, ten minutes, minutes took more than three minutes. So I'm gonna try and cut my ten down to two or three, get you back on track.
You don't get an hour and a half.
Obviously, I'll take questions. I didn't need to, I don't need ten minutes. So since I was last here, the audit committee met on the twenty sixth of September, a few weeks ago, and the minutes, draft minutes are posted. Three things we did at that meeting. We reviewed the first cut of the twenty twenty four financial statements, the year, for the year to June twenty four. The detailed numbers, they look pretty good. Josh, in the back there, who's after me on the agenda to get together with Sean O'Keefe from the Board of Ed, did a fantastic presentation to us on, on those numbers. And the audit of them, of the numbers, the June numbers is underway. The audit is in its early stages, obviously. We meet, we have a meeting scheduled for November fourteenth. The auditor was, was at the meeting and expects to be at a stage as planned, to have a draft of the financial statements to us for the meeting on November fourteenth to discuss. And also to have the sort of, after our feedback, a final set of financial statements, the so-called ACFR for our meeting on December second, that we will then recommend, hopefully, to town council to approve. So everything is on track there. The other thing, piece of business was the internal audit, which I talked to you about last time I was here. Since then, the, we have, we, we, we proposed to work with two firms, you may recall. The one, first one, Clifton Larson Allen, CLA for the minutes. The master service agreement after negotiation was finally signed by our first selectman, I think it was last Friday, so that is now signed by both parties. So we can, we can move ahead and start working with, with, with them. Agreement is in place. The other one, Cohen Resnick is still in negotiation between their legal counsel and our legal counsel. It is not finished. So what we, our next step then is, as reflected in our minutes, is that the audit committee will have an ad, an ad hoc meeting, hopefully next week, to appoint a subcommittee of the audit committee to work with the internal audit. So we don't have five people overseeing everything that they do. It will be a smaller group. That's the way it's been done in the past. So we're, we're busy scheduling and then we can get underway. You know, where, what we're gonna start on, we don't know yet. We get the subcommittee in place and we'll start talking to CLA and work out the details. So that's all I got, but I'll take any questions.
Questions, Tom. So you were in the room earlier, there was a discussion about a potential discrepancy, deficiency in, in the audit and this is something that isn't really necessarily town council's issue, but the gentleman used our microphone and has been consistently demeaning a respected member of the community. Now, I don't, I'm not suggesting this has to be your issue. You have a process that I respect, but I am curious whether you have a reaction as to.
Yeah, that, you know, there were a whole lot of things that he said that, you know, touch, you know, other parts of the town organization beyond the audit committee. But let me just say, the, the audit committee doesn't prepare the financial statements. The audit committee doesn't audit the financial statements. The audit committee oversees the preparation of and the audit of the financial statements. So one of the assertions made by the earlier speaker was that there's a disclosure missing in the financial statements that he thinks should be there. And that's the one, I guess, is really in the wheelhouse of the financial statement preparers, the auditors and the audit committee. So I think he said that it didn't get on the audit committee agenda. I think he, I think his email came in two days before the agenda had been prepared. And there's a lot there, right? So I, I've really what, what, what we had to do as an audit committee is, is the finance department who prepares the financial statements, have they seen this? And, you know, where do they stand on this? Okay. And the auditors, have they seen this? Where do they stand on this? So what I did was speak to the first selectman. Do you know about this? Does the finance department know about this? I'm just talking about the financials. Do the auditors know about it? And, and first selectman said, yes, it is under investigation. So I, I know he hasn't got an answer yet, but from this particular thing, I mean, it was only a few, you know, it's just gonna take time to get to the bottom of, of this and, and then it'll be considered by the audit committee. But, you know, my first step for me, and I don't know the answer yet, is, you know, have the auditors dug into it and, you know, where do they, what do they think? Is he right? Or is all the financial statements correct as they are? And I don't know the answer to that yet.
So I don't think we want to suggest any change in your process. If this is something you're planning to deal with, that's great.
Oh, yeah.
I just need to comment publicly that this, this, this characterization of highly respected member of our community has been, has been persistent and has been going on for some time. And I really would like there to be some public rebuttal, if, if the rebuttal is appropriate. I mean, I, I'd like to clean this gentleman's reputation.
Yeah.
That may not be on you, but if, if it's, if it's not going to be the result of your process, I'm going to keep hammering on it because I am pretty upset about it.
You know, there are a number of aspects there and, you know, we don't want to spend time on, but just which, you know, about ethic disclosures and all, filling out forms, all that kind of thing. Separate issue, but just on the finance, financial statements, we, we have to get to the, get to the bottom of it. And, and, and everybody concerned should, should know where we come out on, on that. And we're not there yet.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Frye. Okay, agenda item number five, financial update.
Hey. Feel like it's been a while. I'm just gonna share my screen, but you should have these on your tablets. So I don't think we've actually met since, since after the year kind of ended. So I can quickly go over the very preliminary end of the year, June fiscal year twenty four. Kind of year to date highlights before jumping into Q1 for FY twenty five, if that's okay with you guys.
Sure.
So so I'll just make this a little bit bigger so it is visible. So overall, on the revenue side of things, year to date, we hit one hundred and one point six six percent of what was budgeted for FY twenty four or one hundred and sixty three point two eight million. That of course led by tax collections, which is falling at one oh one point one eight percent, which represents about a ninety nine point three percent collection rate. Building permits reached their mark kind of at the end there with one hundred and thirty one percent of what was budgeted of eighty, eight hundred and fifty thousand. So that reached one point one million. And that's ahead of last year by, well, two years ago now, by two hundred and sixty five million. Conveyance fees also kind of barely got in over the mark at one oh nine percent. Which is shy of last year by about twenty four thousand. We see that sloping back downward towards the norm, but it's, it's kind of a more shallow slope than I think we expected. Interest on investments obviously was kind of one of our heavy hitters for FY twenty four at a hundred and seventy six percent. At about one point six million ahead of the previous year by two hundred and twenty thousand. Parking revenue was a little bit shy of, of a hundred percent. So it's at eighty one percent right now.
And could you just scroll back up to parking permits? You said two hundred and fifty six, two hundred and sixty five million. You obviously meant thousand, right?
Yeah. Did I say million there? Hundred sixty five.
Underbuilding permits.
Oh.
That was just.
Two hundred and sixty five thousand, yes, of course, yeah. We didn't do that well. So, yeah, on the permit side, on the parking side, permits were a little bit shy, but meters and day passes and the, the other form of parking, which is escaping me right now, Spock's car, both did very well and kind of hit their budget mark. On the expenditure side of things, we actually hit around ninety eight point three seven percent, which is a savings of about two point seven one million. There were a couple contributing factors, one of which was about six hundred and sixty thousand in debt service that we didn't have to expand based on when we went out for bonding. There was about six hundred thousand in savings that we had departments kind of unencumbered towards the end of the year. The Board of Ed gave back about five hundred thousand, five hundred thirty thousand. And there were a couple other savings like in, on the, in the fire department had a couple savings on the sick and injury overtime, which is a good thing. And that kind of correlated a little bit with the worker, workers' compensation fees also coming in shy. And we kind of had a, I don't know if I would say surplus in contingency, but we had contingency left over from, I guess, a lack of emergent requirements during the year. So that leaves us kind of right now with a projected drawdown of around seven hundred and sixty two thousand. At least in this report, in the months since then, expenses, obviously, we're kind of working towards the audit, so things are getting booked and tweaks are getting made here and there. And so expenses remained flat, but we gained about, I believe, two hundred thousand or so in revenue. One from a transfer in from the Get About Special Projects Fund and I think tipping fees also got about eighty thousand or so. So in the end, we're seeing about possibly a five hundred thousand or so drawdown from the budgeted six hundred, six million. So that obviously turned out better than we had kind of anticipated. We don't really budget around five million for the drawdown and really draw down a million or so. So this, I think, turned out pretty well. Any questions on FY twenty four?
Do we know where the savings from the Board of Ed came from?
That's a great question. I don't have the specifics on that. You'd have to, I could reach out to Sean and kind of get a breakdown on that. I'm sure they've presented it in their financial meetings, but I don't have that breakdown.
I have a question. Josh, where does the two point seven million go, savings?
So the savings just roll into the, into the fund balance for the general fund. And that kind of goes towards what we expect to draw down for next year and kind of keep that. I think it's at about twenty twenty one million, which is, is kind of the sweet spot of where we have kept it over the past several years. So with no other questions, on to have the financials for Q1 for FY twenty five. Off to a good start, I think. Overall, we are at fifty three point eight percent on the revenue side of things. We obviously had our first kind of tranche of tax collections in July. That's at about fifty four percent, which is pretty much right on the money for where we were last year. It was about fifty four point four percent or so. Building permits are also kind of off to a good start at twenty six point nine percent. Pretty much the same pace as last year, but off by about six thousand. Conveyance fees are starting really strong at thirty nine ish percent. Up about eighty thousand from last year. Parking is also off to a good start. It is at about sixty five percent of what was budgeted. That's because of many of the permits are kind of currently in the renewal phases. And I'm sure this number is kind of as our parking departments going through the permit renewal process. And interest on investment is also, you know, after the first quarter, going at thirty four percent of the budgeted two million. So that's going strong, of course. And any questions on the revenue side of things? I can see that the, in the other revenues, that includes mostly transfers in. So any of the transfers from other funds that we had been planning during the budget process, either it's for bond premium or from ARPA or things of that nature. And on the revenue side of things, right now, we're at about seventeen point six percent, which is pretty much on pace with where, where we would expect to be. There aren't many unexpected expenses right now. There's a couple, about thirty thousand in storm repairs that we're kind of tracking right now from the recent storm that happened a couple of weeks ago. But other than that, we are off to kind of a good start in the first quarter. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Josh, looking real good. Excellent work for you and the entire team and
Yeah, of course.
Lovely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move it along to agenda item number six, New Canaan Police Department Building Project Update. Bill Walbert, Joe Zagarensky, ten minutes.
Well, town council, thank you for having us. Hopefully, oh, there he is. Thank you, Tiger. You don't want me touching the screens out there. So
Excuse me, Bob, could you make, could you give me screen share?
Building, do we have you, Tiger?
Yeah, I just need to be able to share my screen.
Okay. While Tiger's working on that, let you know a couple of things before we get to the formal presentation. The safety record, most importantly, is, is excellent right now. The Turner has not lost a single day of construction. That's of course important to all of us here in this community. So we want to say hats off to Turner. Secondly, the relations with the neighbors continue to be very, very good. Let's face it, it's a difficult project in tight quarters. We want to thank our neighbors, in particular the EMTs, who have put up with an awful lot. And we want to thank them for their patience. And of course, the net, when we, here we go with the presentation, which is, we're on time, if not slightly ahead. And we have a very healthy contingency still with us. We haven't eaten through too much of it, roughly half in total numbers. And so we're, we're doing very, very well. Want to thank the entire building committee. Also, Joe Zagarensky has done an amazing job, professional project management matters. And having Joe on board has been a wonderful benefit to the, to the entire project. We'll go through some pictures quickly. That's the construction in the back. We've made a lot of progress since then. And Tiger could go, you know, go through these, again, the back of the there we go. On the presentation, does it say what some of these things are?
No, that's the, the council room.
I think the, the next few pictures will actually be labeled like this beautiful South Avenue. Loaded in, they're loaded in the generator. Remember, there are two very long line, long lead time items. The switching gear generator, which we have at our hands, which is a very, very positive thing and makes us breathe a lot easier about the big issues that could go wrong. All right, so you could read where, where we are here on some of these pictures.
Yeah, I can't read it either.
Yeah.
There's the view from inside the jail cell. Sorry, this, this is a view from inside the jail cell itself. This is the fitness room, which used to be the old pistol range looking south. You can see that the walls are being constructed, some of the, some of the mechanicals are in, some of the HVAC. And then this will, this will take shape as we go. This is the new IT room on the main level looking south. We continue to load this in and then fill up the server links as, as more area of the, of the facility becomes available. This is the new lobby area and the dispatch wall looking east. So this is as you're entering. This is your first view of the, of the police department itself. This is the dispatch area. On the left will be a TV screen. On the right will be a news bar, news area.
And as a reminder, the, the decor will really play on the nineteen twenties architecture. Frankly, for some of you older town council members, maybe remind you of your elementary school days, Tom.
I was in high school by then.
This is, this is the women's public toilet at the lobby area looking south. So as you're entering, this is a, one of the, the men's and women's are side by side with a, with a water fountain in the middle. water fountain in the middle. And then this is in the new addition, the main level. Looking east, you can see as it's being built, this is the purpose-built area for the majority of our staff. They are making very good headway now that we've put the, we're looking to have this enclosed to the weather very shortly and be able to then march through the winter without any delay.
And it's probably the number one job right now for Turner. They want to get inside to make sure that they can fill up the what they need to do this this winter, keep them on track.
This is on the upper floor. This is the admin and reception area looking north. So this is where the the chief secretary will sit, Jennifer. And then it's an enclosed space and you only have one means of entry to the area for for security purposes. And then this is the upper level, just looking down the new corridor from, in essence, you're looking north. So you're standing in the door of the chief's office, looking forward. And on the left would be the deputy chief, and then the second door is the captain's office. And then inside the training room, the new gun lockers have been installed. Before training, the all the officers have to disarm and put their put their weapons, their service weapons inside a inside a locker for for safety reasons. And then this is the detective bureau's area looking south through the that areas into the forensics area and the the cabinetry has already been installed in the forensics area and the the lab work along with the hood. And this is the opposite direction, looking in the detective bureau's area again. So they're making very good headway all the way across. Sorry. This is the detectives locker area. Their lockers are upstairs. Everyone else's are downstairs. It's just outside the forensics lab that I had mentioned, so you can see that through the door. And then this is the forensics lab itself with the cabinetry installed. And just waiting for the other equipment to to arrive. Another of the forensics lab. And then the upper level pantry. This is, in essence, the exact location where it was prior, just getting a little makeover itself. And then the projected timeline itself, we are we are on budget and on time at present. So right now, we're trending towards a June twenty twenty five completion of the building and a project completion of fall twenty twenty five after the building's been vetted. You can't necessarily bring the police department in until the the building's been conditioned and everything is in working order, because once we bring the department in, it's very, very difficult to bring service people in to service the area. So we want to make sure that the the entire facility has been commissioned before before we bring the staff back in. So at present, we're looking at that. The building being completed in June of twenty five and then being commissioned during the timeframe between June and fall. And then bringing the staff in in the fall of twenty twenty five.
Right, time does matter because we are paying rent at thirty nine locusts. That's part of the overall budget. So the sooner we can get them in, the less rent we have to pay.
So as we mentioned, the same same thing, progress milestones were December of twenty three. The police department moved to thirty nine locusts. Now, in August of twenty twenty four, the last piece of structural steel was installed. The interior renovation work on the existing building is ahead of schedule. In the fall, winter of twenty twenty four, we'll make additional watertight, the building addition watertight, do some site work, install the permanent power and start finishing the spaces. And then again, our police move in trending June twenty twenty five, fall twenty twenty five. I know we gave you some financials, it's too difficult to read here. We gave you an entire Turner report that they give to the building committee every two weeks. If anyone wants to come, we meet every two weeks, eight o'clock Thursday morning upstairs in the boardroom at Town Hall. Anyone is welcome to attend the meeting. If you have any certain questions, we can address them at that time. And every Wednesday morning at eight AM, Joe and I take a tour of the police department and anyone's willing to come. Several members of the council have come already, some are in the Board of Finance. Tiana makes a makes a trip every every two, three weeks around the building. And so we welcome anyone else that might want to might want to attend. Bill, you can kind of hit it from there if you want.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Tiger. The contingency numbers, as you can see, are really quite healthy between the town's contingency and Turner's construction contingency. Now, we could, you know, try to predict, you know, future expenses. We, you know, have done a pretty good job of dealing with, you know, known issues that when we could quantify them, they have been quantified here. So frankly, we don't we don't expect any major real surprises going forward. The high-risk things have kind of been done already. And so, you know, things like maybe working working overtime, they hit some milestones, things like that, that really comes out of Turner's construction contingency. And so, you know, we would expect, you know, more drawdown on these things as we as we go. But we feel very good about where we are right now compared to a lot of projects, construction projects, just generally. We're we're in a pretty happy place right now. We are in a really pretty happy place. And that's a, you know, thanks to Turner, thanks to our architect, Brian Humes. And, you know, things have gone fairly well with with a very old building. Remember, our big our big early problems had to do themselves early on. And then, you know, more recently, this summer, pilings not being where the drawings said they were. And as you would expect with a hundred-year-old building and a hundred-year-old drawings. And so we had to, we had to work some through some things there, but nothing that we didn't you know, we predicted things would go wrong. And they did. This is a summary of of basically where we are, a lot of detail there. But really, you know, all the different things that we get, all the information we get from Turner. I could I could assure you that between Joe, Tiger and the other committee, our owner's rep, Slam, Gene Dron, we've we we feel we feel very comfortable and so far, so good.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions or comments? Nope, fantastic presentation, guys. Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number seven, twenty twenty five meeting schedule. Has everybody had an opportunity to check out the schedule that's been floating around for a couple of weeks, if not longer? Any comments, any conflicts with your schedules? Do people need more time? Do we want to put it over to our next meeting? Some fine doing. If we need more time, yes, Jennifer.
So embarrassed to say I, was it on our tablets and I?
I believe so, yes. Plus Tucker had emailed it to us all.
Sorry, I will check that and anticipate. No problems, but I.
Okay, so do we want to, people need more time? I mean, I'm fine doing that, so.
Tucker and everybody did it. They were taking into consideration holidays and
Yeah, she said that. And I checked.
When the Gridiron Club is.
Is it generally second Wednesday of the month? Additional, okay.
Okay, so with that said, I mean, I'm going to make a comment. I don't know if I really want to talk about it now, but quite honestly, three straight weeks of two meetings a week, I'm not particularly inclined to do. And I think that I may want to have one of them at least removed. Because that's, I don't even recall doing that in the past, having three straight weeks of of two a week. And I think there's a more, listen, we're all volunteers here. I know we all take it very seriously. I think we had an excellent budget season last year, and there were some comments and criticisms. But overall, just talking about how we set up the process, we moved a lot more efficiently than I have ever seen. It was the most educated I've seen members show up because they really did their due diligence. I think that really reflected in our ability to grasp the subject matter and even, you know, having fantastic questions even from our newest members, which did a heck of a lot better job than I did in my first year around. So with that said, I'm just going to throw it out there. I don't think we have to really talk about it now. We can go on ahead and approve this schedule. But I would, I think, at some point, when we get closer to the budget season, I'd like to at least remove probably the Thursday of the first week of the two weeks, which would be the three eighteen. I honestly don't think we need seven budget. But that's the Tuesday ones, whatever the Thursday one is, I'm reading, I'm sorry, the twentieth, yeah. So I'm just thinking that we don't have to have a long drawn-out discussion, but I just think it's way too much time for what we need to do.
You have Hillary Orman on other hand up.
Yeah, Mike, I agree with you. I think I think seven is a little excessive if we consider that we're all expected to meet with our Board of Finance liaisons and our department head liaisons in advance of budget season. So I agree with you. I think we need to take a look at that budget schedule because it is a bit onerous. I think last year we did it in five meetings, maybe not ideal. I think we can wrap it up in six at most.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Hillary. Absolutely. Thanks, Penny.
That was actually going to be my point as well, is if indeed we are very conscientious about meeting with the Board of Finance and we've got to get the Board of Finance to be as agreeable to be meeting with us.
Yes, great point.
And then put on our schedule when the Board of Finance meetings are so that we know that we can sit through those. Because it will really speed up our discussions when we get to actually our meetings.
I love it. That's exactly, and that's fantastic, because we should be tuned in to the Board of Finance, listen to the presentations. Because remember, the the selectmen scrub it, goes to Board of Finance. They're hitting it, the the department reps are there, hitting their budgets, giving their presentations. That's a time we should be learning. When it comes to us, as I had envisioned it, and I think we got very close to it, was we're in a we're in a position where we're just asking our questions, not listening, you know, to a presentation given like probably five times prior to it getting to us. It's not fair to the department heads who have extraordinary pressure on them. And, you know, our job is to be educated. So I think that's exactly what needs to happen. So.
Can we early on get to the Board of Finance and get these meetings scheduled?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Tell me about the liaison meetings.
The liaison meetings, because that's when the real nitty-gritty and the discussions, and that's when the department heads really.
Yeah, so we we have instructed all staff that after the Board of Selectmen votes on the budget, that that's when the liaison meeting should occur and that they should make sure that they're doing joint meetings with you and the Board of Finance liaison. So hopefully, so we vote on the budget, I think, January thirtieth. I believe I need to double check, but it's the end of January. And so as soon as January thirtieth is over, you guys can start your liaison meetings.
And if those liaison meetings are kind of kind of tricky to schedule because not everybody's available during the day when the staff is here. And I hate to bring the staff in again. So perhaps some of these staff to bodies can meet during the day, but by Zoom. So that someone in the middle of a business meeting could take a half hour and and do those meetings.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
So again, so I'm clear. After Jan thirty, we can start setting up our liaison meetings.
Right, and you could do that in advance of that, but there's not, they're not, I mean, you can set the schedule. There's not, you know, unfortunately, you know, until we've kind of gone through our exercise, you know, you could be talking about things that we cut out or do something else. So it's not a real fruitful exercise until after that.
Right, so we can schedule them to happen after January thirtieth. So everyone, you know, it's what, October sixteenth? Like, we really need to think about that now. Start figuring out schedules, because as soon as, you know, we're coming up in the end of the year. I know you're starting up very soon, so we need to really be cognizant of, get, start looking at your schedule and start figuring out this type of, and I agree, type of schedule where you don't have to impose on the department heads in the evening. So just, it's out there in the, you know, we're months ahead, so everyone start thinking about that. Okay, thanks a lot. All right. We got a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that in the past, historically, I looked at the other meeting schedules for prior years, and it has been six with the vote as a separate meeting, the vote of much. So in looking at what happened last year, we we canceled the meeting. We, Tucker and I discussed it, and the issue was that it was too cramped in a short period of time. There really wasn't enough time to devote to the department's questions or other things that came up. We were very tightly knit into that schedule. So Tucker said that unless it's in the schedule, the meeting cannot happen. I don't understand why, but it can't. But that said, we can cancel the meeting later on during the budget process. If we don't need it, we don't have to meet. We may become so efficient that we can do it in less time.
Love it, I hope so. So, yeah, which is fine. So let's approve as is if everyone doesn't have a problem and we can revisit it. And I think at least the majority of us are pretty much on board with slimming down and removing at least one, if not more. Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the twenty twenty five meeting schedule? Penny moves. Jennifer seconds. All in favor? Looks like it passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to agenda item number eight, committee reports. Bylaws and ordinance, Tom, Hillary, anything?
Instead of reporting, let me just ask a question. Should we schedule a a committee meeting to talk about e-bikes and other related issues?
I personally would love that. I think, and I think you guys would do a killer job on it, so up to you guys to confer.
Hillary?
Yeah, we'll talk, Tom. Yeah.
Let's figure something out.
Okay.
Awesome. That's all I have. Thank you. Education, anything? Nope, finance and government, anything?
Yeah, real quick, I think I I'm going to talk to Eric, who's my co-chair, about scheduling a meeting with the library, the town nominated library liaisons. And obviously, our committee will meet with them and anyone else on this council is invited to attend. But we'll be collecting questions beforehand that, you know, we'll ask them to answer. So just look out for a an email from me or Eric.
Excellent. Thank you, Hillary. Appreciate that. Health and Human Services, Kim and Janet.
Yes, I'm something I'd like to read, that this is about the Behavioral Health Survey that's coming out, that's super important to kind of syncing up what the priorities are for the town as we approach budget season. So I'm just going to read a very brief description of what it is. So the New Canaan Behavioral Health Alliance, which is a group of thirty local organizations that is dedicated to increasing community awareness of behavioral health resources. And put together by the town of New Canaan, Silver Hill Hospital and New Canaan Community Foundation is urging all residents to participate in the five-minute community health and well-being survey, which runs from October first till Halloween. It's anonymous survey. They want to try to get hundred percent participation from everyone in town eighteen and over. And the survey goes over various aspects of health and well-being, including access to and knowledge of local health services, community involvement, barriers to accessing physical and mental health services, attitudes and concerns regarding well-being issues, including emotional health, discrimination and substance abuse, substance use and life satisfaction. The survey takes five to ten minutes. And for someone that does not want to participate online, there's paper copies of the survey that are available throughout October at the New Canaan Library, the YMCA, Lacombe and Walter Stewart's. So I just wanted to let everyone know about that. I took it today. It took me about eight minutes.
Good for you.
Did you take it?
Twenty minutes.
Oh, it took you twenty minutes. Okay, so I really highly encourage everyone to do it. Thank you.
No, we just, it's very important. I think one of the reasons why they want to do this is for data collection. And the more data these agencies have, the more they're likely to get federal funds for health initiatives. So it's very important. And if we can circulate the survey to our networks, that is likely to increase participation.
Yeah, I I want to do what you say, like, you know, we set the good example by we doing it. And but if if we're on other organizations, you know, I I'm trying to encourage them you know, in your, every, every, you know, whether it's a faith group or other not-for-profits, that's a good way we can support the effort.
Thank you. Read. Okay, excellent report. Infrastructure and Utilities, Christina, Rita?
No update.
Okay, Land Use, Recreation and Conservation, Penny and Jennifer.
Okay, little park merk. A sixth platform tennis court and four to six lighted pickleball courts will be included in next year's budget. So there's a lot of racket going.
Lighted what?
Be determined.
Probably near a bank, right? Yeah, yeah.
Wow, that's a major statement right there.
Is that new or is it refurbished?
It is going to be new. Great. They don't know the cost yet, so they'll work that out, but because they're just in the process of budget prep. The new adult fitness equipment in front of Waiting House is essentially completed. And they'll do some private fundraising for the playground portion of it. And there's a new sculptor bench courtesy of the conservation. And there's a new sculptor bench courtesy of the conservation conservancy, pardon me, organization, and that's going to arrive shortly for installation and park.
And, and can I add on from, for conservation? Okay. Chairman, sorry. So this is per Robin Bates-Mason at their last meeting. One item is that they plan it, I'm sorry, yeah, somebody, a donor has come forward that would be interested in, in funding a composter, the potential placement of an actual composter at the transfer station. So they're just inquiring now with Tiger if there would, would be space. That's the first outreach. And then if there were space and then the donor came through, then there would be other logistics. They'd have to, in terms of like, what is the energy to run it, what have you? But I just wanted you to know that that's something they're looking into. I think there is currently, the town of Stanford has its own composter. Gosh, they're also looking into, just following up because this is relevant in terms of the e-bike issue. I know that they, they have been concerned about sometimes e-bikes in Bristow. And I think the Connecticut, there's a, in the state law that class one and two e-bikes are not allowed on trails or paths. So there's some discussion Tiger has to get back to them on whether they put some gravel in, in the pathways in Bristow. So, I mean, it sounds, you know, esoteric, but they need to figure out whether that is a pathway then they can tell the kids they can't be on it. Or if it means a gravel pathway, they are allowed to be on it. So they're trying to work that out. But it is kind of relevant to, to, to people. Because sometimes they're all, all ages, you know, walking.
It's absolutely relevant. There's multiple, I mean, you know, Mike, our kids are the same age. There's kids, like their heads are being split open and like using these E whatever motorcades or what they're using. Is there should be some little bit more defined
You said boundaries was a good word.
He's like, don't go on this gravel because your, your machine's going to flip you over and put you on your back. So it's just an uncharted territory that we're just exploring now. So that, that, those are great comments.
Right. And I'm worried about the kids and then I'm worried about the folks, my demographic and older that, you know, hobbling along this path, you know, getting, you know, sort of their balance off. So, you know, both sides of it.
Worried about everybody. Just, I think, you know, this is something that's new and that we should, we should walk into this together. So excellent points.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, public safety, we just had an update. So I have nothing more. Hillary, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, and affordable housing, Hillary.
The, you know, we're still waiting on final word about the purchase of the Avalon property by the Housing Authority. So that will be a nice development. And I think as the Affordable Housing Committee feels like it can breathe slightly and, and really come up with a great plan for how to get the, the next four-year moratorium. So that's where we are.
Excellent report, Hillary. Thank you. Okay, could we have a motion to adjourn? Christina makes the motion. Kim seconds it. Thank you, everybody.